Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. We have with us this evening Ms. Leann Geis, the Development Director with the American Heart Association to present the City of Jefferson with the Silver Workplace Health Award. So you're welcome to come forward and then also Mrs. Strope is going to give us an update. We're glad to have you all here, welcome.
This is so official. So, the American Heart Association has launched an ambitious movement to build a culture of health and well-being throughout the country. And we're putting our plan into action where most Americans spend most of their time, which is at work. So we are relying on fantastic organizations such as the City of Jefferson City who are adopting the Workplace Health Achievement Index. This is a large undertaking. As I understand it, it's about a 27-page document that your HR team, I believe, has put together and are maintaining. And so we would just like to thank you and of course, recognize the City of Jefferson City for their achievement as the Silver Award. Is there anything else that you wanted to recognize as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce and recognize Becky Lee is a Human Resources Specialist and did a lot of work with this. And also John Schwartz, who is our Wellness Coordinator, and Sarah Trittler, who's another Human Resources Specialist, also put a lot of effort into obtaining this award. So I just wanted to make sure that they were all mentioned and show my appreciation to them for all that they've done for the city.
Well, thank you. We appreciate all the work that went into this. We're honored to receive and accept this award and we will do our part to continue with the health and wellness of our city employees and also with the entire community. So thank you for recognizing us. Any questions of council? Okay, well with that, we'll invite you forward. We'll get a picture with our award and if council would like to come up behind me and we'll take a picture together. I'd like to invite Deanna forward and if you have anyone else with you this evening from Missouri Foster Care and Adoption Association, we'd like to celebrate your 10 years with this special proclamation this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I know you just recently had your annual gala and if you want to tell us what you all do here in the community.
Sure. So Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption Association celebrates our 10 years this year, which is a huge feat for us. Our organization serves 13 counties in central Missouri. We educate, support, and advocate for kinship foster and adoptive children, youth, and families. Most importantly, our program, the Begin Again Backpack Program, provides to every child that comes into care, especially the City of Jefferson, because this is the first city that we ever did programming in. We provide them with a backpack so that they go into care with something that they can call their own. So, we appreciate this.
Well, congratulations on your 10 years. You've really done a lot in our community and I'll share a few of the points here on this proclamation. And it says, "Whereas 10 years ago, a former foster child and adoptive parents build a support group in Cole County, and now the organization serves 13 counties in Missouri and is the only family resource center in central Missouri. And whereas Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption Association plays a critical role in helping to bring light to the number of kids who are in need of education, advocacy, and support, and the city has played a leadership role by joining in efforts to promote education and awareness to the great need of foster care and adoptive families." So I thank you and ask all the people of Jefferson City who have already joined Central Missouri Foster Care and Adoption in creating happy, healthy, and safe homes and community for children and youth foster care and assisting and seeking adoptive homes. So we are here to congratulate you on your 10 years of dedicated service to the City of Jefferson and we look forward to many, many more.
Thank you for this amazing proclamation and I will hang it on the wall and keep it forever
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
as I do all of them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah Bayshore is our Family Finding Director.
If I could, I know Deanna's being very shy, but she actually started this organization out of trunk of her car.
She is responsible for the 30 Days to Family and the Extreme Recruitment Program, who helps
And so, as a board member of the organization, I am very proud of things that she has done
to find families on the front end with kids that are coming into foster care and within
and the movement and direction which we are moving now. As someone also who was adopted, this organization is very dear to my heart.
30 days, we try to get them out of foster care. Extreme Recruitment works on the back end for kids who have lingered in care for over
So I just want to say thank you for the things that you've done for CMFFA and the things
22 months.
you will continue to do for the organization.
Some of the kids that we work with and that Sarah works with have stayed in foster care
So I'm just honored to be a part of it as well, too.
for six and seven years.
So, thank you so much.
We're honored for you to be a part of it.
So something that was supposed to be short-term has turned into long-term.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Graham, for those comments and we appreciate your work in
And so that's her role with the agency.
the community. Well, we'd like to present the proclamation and we'll get a picture of you with our city
She comes from the Children's Division with 13 years of experience.
council members.
Tammy Rogers is one of the co-founders with me over 10 years ago. She's an adoptive mom and she is our Finance Director. So, thank you so much.
Now, we have item 4C, which is Resolution 2018-23.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a restricted gift agreement with Mrs. Betty J. DeLonge, trustee of the Betty J. DeLonge Revocable Trust dated December 9, 1992.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution approves a restricted gift agreement between the Betty J. DeLonge Revocable Trust, the City of Jefferson, and the Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation. This gift agreement restricts the donation of certain funds to the Parks and Recreation Foundation and requires those funds be used for the design and construction of a bridge to Adrian's Island.
Great. Well, we will entertain a motion to take up Resolution 2018-43.
So moved.
Thank you. And we will have some council discussion and at this time, as we begin the discussion, I'd like to invite forward, we have some special guests in the audience this evening. So I would like to call forward Mr. Joe DeLonge. Welcome. We are so very happy to have you here this evening.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. Barry Mangold from KMIZ 17 contacted me earlier today and he said he would like to have a written statement of why my mother is doing this. And so I typed something up and I had her read, I read it to her and she approved it. So I'll just read you what she approved. "Per your request, as to the reason why my mother, Betty Jo DeLonge, has agreed to give $3,240,000 to the Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation for the construction of the bridge to Adrian's Island, here is the answer. Number one, BJ, as she prefers to be called, has long believed in giving back. She recognizes that Jefferson City has been a wonderful place to have lived, raised a family, and built a business for the past 75 years. She's had a particular interest in civic beautification and specifically the development of a riverfront park for Jefferson City for the last 20 or 30 years. The bicentennial bridge to Adrian's Island, which this gift will fund, will bring about something near and dear to her heart. Number two, BJ often says, 'If it's going to be, it's up to me.' She decided in September 2018 that she would like to do this. She checked with my brother and sister-in-law and received our full support despite the fact that the gift represents over half of her assets. Number three, she felt this was an appropriate way to honor my dad, F. Joe DeLonge, who pioneered our family getting in the steel bridge business." That's it. So thank you very much for all that you've done, especially for you, Mayor. And I have to, special thanks to Randy Allen with the Chamber, he's going to take charge of this, and to Anne Manako Warren with her attorney who negotiated all this with the city attorney. And thank you very much for all you did, too, Ryan.
Well, Joe, this is something that our community has longed for, for generations. And the fact that your family and your mother and honoring the legacy of your father, that she has seen the importance of giving to this and making this bridge a reality is something that we are so very appreciative of and to think about the generations to come and how many people will enjoy this bridge and this view and being able to finally get to our riverfront. So we're so very thankful to you and your family.
You're welcome.
And while you're up here, if you don't mind maybe staying up here while we have the discussion, and I'd also like to invite up, we have Mr. Randy Allen and we have Bob Gilbert here as well. If they'd like to come forward, I'd like to mention their role in this. And then we also have Mrs. Anne Manako Warren and you're welcome if you want to come up or, okay, advisory role. Thank you for all that you've done as well. So we're glad to have all of you here this evening and we'll take up the bill and have some, or the resolution, have our questions and our discussion and we are going to show the short video. So I wanted to mention that Bob Gilbert with Bartletton West and his role in creating the video and the logistics of this. And then Mr. Randy Allen, the Chamber President, and the Chamber has really kind of kept this project together over the decades that it's been talked about and now was able to get the coordination to make this happen. And who would have thought we'd be here sharing this significant news this evening? It's so very exciting, probably the best news that we could ever share with the community and with the state, that we're building this bicentennial bridge and it will be completed in time for the bicentennial, which is very exciting and what this will mean to our community. So, yes.
I might mention one thing about this. BJ's total gift included additional amounts. I think it was $140,000, wasn't it, Randy? She gave over the last year and a half before the check she'll write tomorrow and that was for the design of the bridge. It's 30% design drawings and Bob and Randy have been very involved in that. As most of you know, Randy is an architect and he's really been a promoter of this for many years. And they've done a wonderful job with the designs and they put together this video as part of that from the funds that she gave over the last year and a half.
Well, thank you. Without her contributing to that, then we wouldn't be so far now that we can actually get this going and get it completed. So, very thankful. And so we have Bob and Randy here and what we may do now is show the video and Bob, you're welcome if there's anything you want to add while the video's playing of what it is. I know you've seen it before, so we'll invite Bob that could kind of point out. So why don't we go ahead and start the video?
There's a little bit of music, I think, with it, so I won't say it.
And for those of you that would like to see this again, it's at bicentennialbridge.org.
That's correct.
So this kind of takes us on what this is going to look like in our community, so.
I was, yeah, I was here at a city council meeting a few months ago and I believe most of you have seen this and we have, also have a virtual reality goggle version of this, too, if anybody would like to see that at some point, but.
And this is a new version, the newer one.
Yeah, I think this one probably has some of the night views. We do have some street lighting and some, well, trail lighting that we show, so you're going to see that as the video wraps up. But I guess for those in the audience, I can narrate a little bit of this. Obviously, we're at the Capitol Ground, starts between the Senate Garage and the Veterans Memorial, spans the Union Pacific Railroad completely, that one span completely traverses their entire right-of-way. And then, as you notice, the rail cars are what appears to be rail cars there. Those will be called galleries for information, interpretive information for visitors as they're going through, celebrating the bicentennial and Missouri's history, Jefferson City's history. And again, we're very thankful for the donors, the DeLonge family, as well as others who have come to the table to be part of the project and be recognized on this, but also contribute to some of the interpretive opportunities along the bridge. So we've got overlooks, other interpretive centers, we just passed through another one there, and scenic rest areas like these as the person would traverse down the bridge. This is a pedestrian and bicycle facility only. It will be able to carry vehicles for, you know, emergency or maintenance access, but it will not be permitted to have vehicles from the public. This is down on the landing area of the island and then it's going to transition, I think, to the night scenes here next. So, we're very excited about the project and to see it moving forward. So thankful for the DeLonge family and for the investment that they've made in the project. And we're excited about getting started. So, soon the activities to begin, the design process will include being out on the island to stake some of the substructure unit locations or the piers. And then we're going to be doing the geotechnical drilling operation here yet this month and December to start the final design process for the bridge components. Randy, you want to sing? Make any comments?
No, I'm not going to sing, but you get great.
And the amazing news, which is what we're taking up this evening, is that this bridge will be built with all private funds. The private donors are building this bridge, which is just amazing and fantastic. And we are still seeking private donations and there's an opportunity for those that are interested now, seeing that it is going to happen. There are some, as you can see, some of the lookouts that are still available for those who are interested and they can contact me or Bob or Randy and we are open to, the Parks Foundation is taking these tax-deductible donations. So, I've had a few people that have reached out that said by the end of the year, they need to make a gift and certainly this is a way for the public to do that. So, wow, that's very exciting and great news. And so we have before us this resolution and I'll open it up for any council deliberation. You all, if you would stay up here, too, as well. Any council comments, questions? And you'll see that this particular resolution is sponsored by all 10 city council members. And I know, as we said, to pass that along to BJ. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to take up 2018-23.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously, so thank you and congratulations. And Randy, and on behalf of the Chamber, I want to thank you for taking the lead. The next steps here in the coming weeks, we will be working on the agreement for all the parties involved and the entities that will be working together to make this project become a reality. So thank you for helping us keep it on track and now taking the lead. And Mr. Gilbert, for all your work. Now, the real work will begin out there, so great job. And Joe, to you and your family, we're so very thankful. I admire your mother so much. She is an amazing woman. I look to her as a role model and I really appreciate not only all the work she's done in this community over the years, but how giving she is and what a giving heart she has and how thankful we are. So please pass along those messages. Thank you. So, before you leave, if you three would come forward, we are going to get a picture even though we have nothing to present, we're going to document this moment in time, okay? And we also have with us this evening some members of our Parks and Recreation Foundation. So I would like to recognize, I wonder, Mr. Towner, Mark Towner? Mr. Towner, would you like to come up here briefly? I would like to recognize the Parks Foundation, too. And I apologize that I did not up until this point, so.
Well, thank you.
So recognizing that we also have some of our Parks Foundation members here, along with Diane Gillespie from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, wanted to make sure and recognize those that are so instrumental and involved and my apologies for not having you up here sooner and as I was leaving and saw you all sitting here in the audience, but this is such a monumental thing and we appreciate the Parks Foundation and they unanimously approved at their meeting last week to accept this gift as well, so we are in partnership with them. So does council have any questions for the foundation? Okay, all right, thanks to all of you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. So now we are at item 5A. We have Bill 2018-55 up for reconsideration.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addressed as 3410 Sherman's Hollow.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First to orient you to the location of this, this bill. Up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted and it's located on the corner of Sherman Hollow and Wildwood Drive, about a quarter of Ramal North of West Edgewood Drive. The property is owned to PUD, a Planned Unit Development zoning category, meaning that any development of the property requires a review and approval of a PUD plan through the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately by the city council. And so this bill would approve a PUD development plan for construction of two duplexes on the property. Up on the screen is the PUD development plan, the site plan portion of that plan. The site does have some slope to it and so would actually be excavated out of a hill slope in order to make a flat area, so to speak, for the construction of two duplexes as shown. Each of the, each unit within the duplexes would have a two-car garage and driveway connecting to Sherman's Hollow. And the storm water for that portion of the site would be directed down toward Sherman's Hollow and into the municipal storm sewer system. Also have building elevation, so with PUD plans, designs of buildings are often incorporated into those PUD plans and that is the case with this one. So up on the screen is the design for the duplexes, showing a brick facade on the front. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this PUD proposal at their September 13 meeting and recommended approval on a vote of seven to zero. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing for Bill 2018-55. We do have Mr. Paul Van Horn signed up. Would you like to begin, Mr. Van Horn?
By the way, I have not been crying. I had macular, I got macular degeneration of which, in fact, I just had an injection in my eyeball today, so.
Oh, my goodness.
So those of you haven't had that, hopefully you never get it. I'm addressing here tonight the previous concerns and let me compliment the city council, our councilman, Mr. Fitzwater, and also Carlos Graham for working with us in that section. We've also met with the staff that's done an excellent job as far as explaining that. I also contacted the city hall today to make sure that we had these showing up here. The concern, major concern that we had was the runoff and traffic. Those of you know me, by the way, I resided in that section of the city. I've been very a strong believer in what we've talked about tonight, as far as the development of Adrian Island and the waterfront, and also what's going on on the southwest end of Jefferson City. Economic development is one of my beliefs and strong beliefs. The major thing is also maintaining the property values of where we live. If, those of you know where Ria's is, Restaurant, and we have some noted governmental people that live out in that area, how many of you raise your hand to know who that is? Steve, you probably, that is our lieutenant governor. And naturally, those houses that are out there are very valuable. The duplexes that we have is a transition to those high, 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 high property. Our concern is to maintain that property values as it goes from Wildwood all the way down through those duplexes, because they range on average of probably $250,000 and some of them go up higher than over $300,000. And looking at them, you would not think that they're that large. We do have people that have, that I think have changed their minds as far as this development. And are there any questions and are people in the audience that would like to speak to this?
And we will allow them, under the public hearing, even if they haven't signed up, they're welcome to speak.
Okay.
Well, after you're finished, Mr. Van Horn, so we'll let you finish yours and then we'll see.
But in general, the only questions I had, and I've, all of you have seen my previous emails, I'm sure, to the city council. And it's the last paragraph that I've had from Mr. Leidner, which says, I'm trying to read this now. I. Mr. Fitzwater, can you read that last paragraph? I can't read it.
I highly value curb appeal of these duplexes and will see that they reflect the quality and design of the neighboring condo units.
That was a statement from Mr. Leidner and maybe perhaps we can have clarification from Mr. Leidner, what he means by that, and for the city council and for the people here in attendance. I turn that over to him and also the rest of the people here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Van Horn.
Do we have any questions?
Did you have any questions?
Yes, I did, from Mr. Van Horn.
Okay, Mr. Graham has a, Councilman Graham has a question.
So, Mr. Van Horn, what I'm hearing tonight is that the concerns in which you had, those concerns have been answered? Is that, is that a true statement?
That's why I asked Mr. Fitzwater to answer that, ask that question, that last paragraph. I do not know, because I'm not in a position to know as such. He is going to try to externally have those look additionally, just completely like us, like we have. And I don't know whether that would. like we have, and I don't know whether that would impact or negatively impact the value of their property. Rental impacts negatively, according to the realtors that I have talked with, some of them are appraisers, some are apartment owners, they've indicated to me that many times rental property does have a negative impact on property that are full occupied in ownership. The people that live in our, and I think most homeowners' associations do have provision in their covenants that we cannot rent to anyone else in both covenants, so that's a concern. Myself, I don't know. I don't know what impact it has. All I do know is that some of the information that I have, and I'll be happy to share this with you, from the Realtors Association show the value of the properties throughout Jefferson City. So answering your question, I can't tell at this point.
Right, because I think what the major concern that I heard you state this evening was the fact of the curb appeal, and are trying to make sure that that is your only concern.
I can't speak for the individuals that are receiving water runoffs at this point. I know that some of them that I know, Carol Potite was at the bottom of the hill where we had flooding into their slab, and they had to, I mean, that was a big problem. Now, I do not, she'd be the person to ask that question, as whether she's come to that satisfaction or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn, any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Van Horn. We'll allow, if there's anyone else here to speak in the public hearing, so would anyone else like to speak this evening on Bill 201855? Welcome. My former teacher. Welcome.
You do very well.
Thank you.
My first concern, Mr. Graham, was about the drainage problem. And since we first met, the Public Works Department has been out. He and I talked, we walked the property. He had a whole schematic of the area, so he knew the things that needed to be done. Over time, a lot of erosion has occurred, that's been a problem. But the association that, the West Point Association that we're in, Mr. Nun has engaged a construction, a construction firm that will come down, that did come over and went through this entire property and took measurements, and so I think that is being resolved. So I have, the curb appeal part, if that's going to be, as he said, I think it's wonderful Mr. Leidner is going to work with us. So I have no objections otherwise.
So your concerns have been answered so far?
Yes.
Until you hear the response from Mr. Leidner?
So far, until they actually do what they say they're going to do.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Potite, any other questions? Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this bill? Welcome. Hi, Mr. Wise.
I'm Roger Wise, I'm the Secretary of the West Point Homeowners' Association. We still have concerns about putting residential, rental property in with residential. However, we also have some additional concerns that came out, and we thank Councilman Fitzwater and Graham for an informal meeting to discuss these. Traffic is going to be a problem. That is not a square corner, as you can see there, it comes down and then goes back up, and it's already a traffic problem now getting out on Wildwood, and I don't know what it's going to be like if those people have visitors there and there are cars on the street. Additionally, during our informal meeting, I still have concerns for the water runoff. If you'll look at the west side of the second duplex, there's just a short distance to the next full property line, and that's going to be a 10-foot drop supposedly. We don't know whether that's a retaining wall, they're going to slope it, or what it's going to be. It was not made very clear, and I don't think city staff knows completely what's going to happen in that particular area. Is there going to be a 10-foot retaining wall? Is it going to be a 10-foot berm? What's it going to be to keep that water from running in, especially to the next house? The next house is just a short distance, and what's going to happen? Is that going to be a retaining wall? So am I going to fall over a 10-foot retaining wall? I think there's also a city code that says you have to have hand railings on certain retaining walls, at least it used to be, that are a certain height. So I think those are some additional concerns. If you decide to pass this, I think you need to address, number one, the water runoff, a better example of what's going to happen there, and number two, address the traffic problems. It's bound to happen that there's going to be more traffic on Wildwood, if Wildwood is ever cut all the way on through to Route C, or whatever that next distance is out there. But it's already a problem. And part of the problem is, if you drive there and you're sitting there on Wildwood, going to turn north on, I mean, you're on Sherman's Hollow and you're going to go north, there's a hump in the street. It's very difficult to see already, and if there are cars sitting there and you're coming around and so on, I think we're going to have wrecks there. If we don't do something like, for example, limit parking on the north side of Sherman's Hollow in that first block. I know you don't like to do those kind of things, but I don't want to see anybody wrecked or anybody hurt, or even anybody killed. So again, our three concerns, rental in with residential, number two, the water runoff, I don't think it's been adequately answered, and number three, I think we need to look at the traffic patterns. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's W E I S.
Thank you.
I'm W I S E.
Would anyone else like to speak? Welcome.
I'm Rich Maloney. I live on Sherman's Hollow down the hill, and I just want to reiterate some of his comments. That hump he's talking about, coming up the hill, you can't see, when you're waiting on Sherman's Hollow to turn left to go north, you can't see, and all of a sudden, a car pops up over the hill. Now, if they're going under the speed limit, you've got plenty of time to stop, but if they happen to be, come a little faster, it gets pretty close at times. When you're coming up to turn onto Sherman's Hollow, the street is not at a 90-degree angle. As you come up to turn, the street actually falls back at that angle, and so when you turn, there happens to be another car coming up the other way on Sherman's Hollow. You've got, you've got a potential problem, because it swings you out farther into the street. And so we talked some at our meeting we have with the councilman, that that's a place, too, that we're, you're afraid that an accident could happen, especially if the new houses put in there have some on-street parking at times, it makes that turn even narrower. And so I feel the same way that the previous gentleman talked, the same things I'm worried about. I live at the bottom of the hill, and that hill can take no more water runoff as it is right now. My house is, well, it's all, it's rock, very little topsoil in that area. So the water gets in the ground, and then it runs on top of the rock, under the ground, but on top of the rock, and flows all the way down to my house, and I've lived there since '03, we built it. There's always a big wet spot in the corner of my lot where the retaining wall is, because all that underwater runoff comes down the hill and then eventually comes out, and it's behind the retaining wall, and leaves a large area in the back of my yard wet. In fact, I have to rope it off so the mower's going to come through and mow when it's wet. I've replaced the soil and grass for years, so it just shows you the kind of water that's coming, flowing under that ground down that steep hill. And so the water, any more water runoff and things like that are concerned. Even they let it out in the street and it comes back, some of it doesn't reach the street and come back down the hill, a lot of water, when it rains, flows between each one of those units on Sherman's Hollow, and they flow to the back, flow to the back and then down the hill. So there's, probably the builders should have had a little better foresight in what they did when they bought that property. But that water runoff is bad, and that's one of the big issues that we have, along with the hill there and the parking and the turn on the street. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else here to speak this evening?
Yes, I want to kind of reiterate what...
If you'd want to come to the podium so they can hear with the microphone, thank you.
I don't really have anything new to say, except that I am right next door to these buildings. And I really hope that how he excavates his buildings to rest on this land, that it does not cause an imminent problem with my property, which sits maybe 20 feet from his. And up to now, I haven't had any water in my place at all. I don't want any. And I'm concerned, there is a 10-foot drop, and it's imminent, it's right there, it's just, you know, and I'm concerned that, and I don't know what his intentions are on excavating that property, someone said that he was going to go down maybe eight or 10 feet and start his flattening out so that the water runs down Sherman's Hollow and not this way west. I don't know if that'll happen or not. It's just a question mark in my mind, and I don't know, just like the man said, the other builders didn't really take all this into consideration. They couldn't have, it was too large of an undertaking, I guess, I don't know. I know we probably have some underground pipes and things to take care of a lot of that water, but I think we still have water problems. I guess all of Jeff City has water problems, we're going to have them. But I don't want water that I didn't have before. I don't have any water problems right now, I'm right next door to these, this building, and I really don't want any. I don't have an answer. I've seen a lot of building going on, I have built homes myself. I'm sorry. Did you need to say something?
No, you're welcome, you can keep going.
I know when people excavate, they are considering the trees that's there, there are a lot of trees on that property. I do know that those trees will not survive, they just don't. They never have, they just don't, because the roots will not survive that kind of excavation. And that means I might have some water problems. I don't want any. I don't have a solution, because I'm not in that kind of an engineering mode, but I would appreciate whoever the engineers are that see to this sort of problem, make sure that it is handled if they will, if they are going to excavate. I don't think they're going to have basements, so that means they're going to build on top of the land, you know, they're not going to go down. I don't know. That's my concern, and then the traffic, too, because I have seen a lot of almost accidents when they come down Wildwood, they're not going 30 miles an hour like the speed limit, they're going 40 and more. And at night, if they have their lights on, it's not so bad, but during the day, you don't know if people are coming up over that rise into our junction there. So that's another problem that I see that could really be exacerbated by what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
So are there any questions that I haven't touched on?
Thank you, and I know who you are, but we do just need your name for the record is all.
I'm not of yours, by the way. You know me.
Yes, thank you. All right, yes, thank you, thank you very much. All right, great, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
I just have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Graham?
I don't know if this is something that can be done or not, I'm just asking a question, because simply I do not know. Since Ms. Yuris is stating that she's never had a water problem in her, in her place now, and if this development goes through, and it's going to be digging down of maybe 10 feet, was there something that she can get recorded through the Recorder of Deeds in regards to no water problems, and if case something does happen with this development, she has some type of recourse to take? I'm just asking, I don't know.
If we would direct that to Mr. Sanders or Mr. Moulman?
I think Mr. Moulman would be the expert with legal advice. The adage is that a person can record whatever they see fit to record, it's whether or not it's competent evidence for what they want to prove. I can't answer that question directly, I think any person interested in doing so would need to engage the services of their own attorney. It's not something that I've personally heard of, though.
I was just, you know, simply asking the question, because I know that is a real big concern, and I know I've talked to Ms. Yuris several times before, and she's always stated that she hasn't had a problem, and that's her biggest concern, and I think that that's everybody's biggest concern.
That's not something I could give guidance on.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Welcome.
I'm Tom Hartman, I live at 923 Manassas Place. Jefferson City is mainly hills, I guess I don't need to tell anyone that. So unless you live on top of a hill, it might be wise to move out, or to move on top of a hill, because if you don't live on top of the hill, you have just bought yourself a potential problem. Our community resides just across from the Sherman's Hollow development. I'm the one from our community, I guess, that wants to speak in opposition to what has been said. We had a big, big water problem in our side of Sherman's Hollow, and our councilman, Carlos Graham, was good enough to get the city engineers to come out and look at our problem, and to give us the recommendation of what to do about our problem, and then let us solve our problem ourselves, which is what we did. And I might say, it costs us many thousands of dollars to get the job done. The last woman in our community who had a problem, before we rectified the situation, saw the water coming from the hillside into her back door, and it ran out her front door. That's a problem. We solved it finally, but we spent many thousands of dollars of doing it. My mother taught me, before I entered into some sort of an obligation, to try to see what I was getting into, and anyone who buys a property at the bottom of the hillside can expect eventually... And anyone who buys a property at the bottom of the hillside can expect eventually, perhaps, to have a problem. And the best way to alleviate that is to spend some money on trying to remedy the problem before it develops. And so that's why our community is so very, very appreciative of what Councilman Graham did on our behalf, getting the city engineers to come out, devise a plan for us, suggest what we should do, and we went ahead and did it. So I recognize that I am speaking in opposition to what many of the people here this evening have said and have said in the past. But given the fact that we have, in our community, essentially a community that lives on hillsides, it seems to me like what we need to do if we are faced with a problem, or if we feel that we might be faced with a problem, to try to remedy the problem before it develops or if it has developed, to solve it. I was a depression baby. My folks didn't own a house until I was in high school. I remember the first house that we owned and how thrilled mother was to finally own her own house. And it costs a lot of money to own a house. We all know that. I think that the, that the recommended development
And I know if you would like to wrap up your comments, I think you're at the five minutes. I just received a signal from the back, so.
Oh, okay. Is my time up then?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, good enough.
Okay. Pardon me. Did you, you can, and sir, would you, did you want to finish your thought? I didn't mean to, I just wanted to let you know the five minutes if you just want to wrap up. Or did you have anything, do you want to finish that thought? I apologize. Usually we have our five minutes on the screen. I know they're signaling me from the back, but I, I'm not sure we don't have it up on
What I had wanted to say in conclusion was that we could do much worse in developing that corner, which is under discussion tonight, than to go with what has been proposed. If we go down into that community that Mr. Leitner has developed, he has done a beautiful, beautiful job. And it's a lot better than having a hamburger joint there that you can buy hamburgers for 75 cents or I think it's a 79 cents. You can go up to Columbia and go to one of the places up there and buy those. Maybe they'll come down and develop that corner.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak this evening? Welcome.
My name's John Bailey, and I live at 922 Shiloh Place. I'm the president of the association that Tom was speaking of. Couple of points that I listened to the way everybody explained this. We were told, or at least the homeowners in our association was told, that we don't have a water problem. That was guaranteed by the people that built the property. And so we ended up spending more than what he, thousands of dollars. But this, when the association takes over a property, it doesn't, it is, belongs to the association. So builder was out. We had to pay. I think Dottie's point is, she doesn't want to have to pay. And Mr. Leitner is saying he's going to direct all the water out of the property. Mr. Beasley told us the same thing. So what I'm trying to prefer, and I think Carlos even mentioned to your attorney, who's going to be responsible for that? You don't, it seems like the city is not. So we, that's why we come opposed to this building, because they can't answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Usually that would require council approval.
I would allow it.
Okay.
If there's any objections.
Any objections?
I agree with a lot of what they said. When you live on a hill, you've got a problem. But when you live on a hill and somebody's going to build something on the top of the hill that hasn't been there, and you've been there for years, then you want to make sure what you build on the hill isn't going to make more problems for you. If it was built there first, and you've had it. But it wasn't there, it was open land, and now if you build it and it doesn't drain right, now you're making problem for the people down the hill. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Mayor Mike Bates, Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street. I will try to keep it brief. First of all, I'd like to thank you and the council for the reconsideration. We think that we did a poor job of communicating initially, and we're, hopefully, we're here tonight, and I'll try to keep that brief. With me tonight is a member of the original development, which was BKR, Beasley, Kehoe, and Rema. Terry Rema is here. Steve Leitner, who has bought the property and is proposing to develop it, is here. Patrick Kramer, the senior project engineer for us that's done the design to date. BKR purchased the property in 1994, and it's our understanding the first townhomes were built in 1996. The Dot Yures property, we think, according to records, was built in 2001. The lot that we're talking about tonight, the one-acre lot, was always anticipated to be commercial. Needless to say, if you look at the market in Jefferson City, Edgewood, Truman, Eastland Drive, there's a lot of commercial property sitting. Mr. Leitner approached us earlier in the year, probably six months ago. He owns the Jefferson West Apartments, 196 units, and we think he's done a great job of being a landlord. And his goal was to build four additional units for a total of 200. So we set about trying to come up with a plan. I'm going to cover the issues as we understand them. We know there's been several neighborhood meetings, and we've communicated with several of the neighbors. The first issue was stormwater. We did provide, and Eric and the city staff have done a really good job of providing you with background information. We provided a hard copy of the plan, and you are, they are correct. The site would actually be lowered, and water would be prohibited from going to the townhomes. You've got in front of you Exhibit A, B, C, and D. Most importantly, there's a hand exhibit behind that, and when you see that, you'll see the red square that is actually the one-acre building site. And you will see blue lines on that paper that actually reflect an enclosed system. If you look to the left, that's the condo development, and that's actually the concern where we're hearing about the stormwater. If you'll look below the project site, you will see an enclosed system that goes to a detention basin south of the state office buildings. So what we're trying to present tonight, and we think that we didn't make clear before, is that we are not tying to the townhome system. We are truly independent of that. So in regard to stormwater, we think that is the final answer. The site will actually be graded, and will, there will be a burn left between Dot Yures property and the Leitner development. The second issue was traffic, and we may ask Mr. Marash to enter into the discussion here, but Wildwood is an arterial street. A Wildwood is not near capacity, and we believe our evaluation says site distance is adequate. Due to the fact there is a crest vertical there, if you don't pay attention, cars can pop over the hill. But it meets, as we understand it, city design standards. The other thing I would mention is that the nature of the development, as much as this was considered a commercial lot for, since the beginning of the development, there would have been considerably more traffic. In regard to property values, Mr. Leitner owns 196 units next door. Much of that was built prior to the development. We believe that there is no impact on property values, and as a matter of fact, we think we might be mitigating that, that the two duplexes would be far better than the potential commercial uses. Landscaping, Mr. Leitner has agreed to provide a landscape buffer between Ms. Yures and his property, and also do some tree planting. In regard to the elevations you saw, you saw brick veneer. He's also proposed to add partial brick on the sides of the buildings. He said they routinely do that as far as maintenance purposes. And then project design, there is a commitment to the extent that we've even contacted the brick supplier. There were two types of brick supplied for the original project. We're committing to match color, I'm talking about brick siding and roof, as closely as possible, so that this blends in with the community. Mr. Leitner's goal from the beginning of this was to be compatible with the neighborhood he's building adjoining to. Be happy to answer any questions. I noticed a couple of you are starting to roll your eyes, not necessarily at me, but at the time, I hope.
We're not rolling eyes, I don't think, up here. Hopefully not. Any questions for Mr. Bates? Councilman Mahalovich?
Okay. What is the, I heard about a 10-foot transition between the property, adjacent properties. How's that transition going to occur? Retaining wall with fence and, I don't know if that I get that in the drawings?
Let me turn to that exhibit, which, which, is that D? Yes, I'm with you. If you, if you'll look at Exhibit D, you'll see the contours. The lot slopes from the northeast corner at Wildwood to the southwest corner on Sherman's Hollow. So there's a continuous slope across the lot. These were designed to be slab-on-grade, so there will not be a basement. And right now, the grading plan shows that there would be slopes, so these would be maintainable slopes, Mr. Mahalovic. Now, if that would change and there would be a wall, the folks are absolutely right. Over a certain height, three to three and a half feet, you provide fencing for that, too. So that's not a part of the design concept right now. Anyway, it would be all graded with slopes.
Second question with regard to traffic. That seems to be, I've crossed off all the issues that I've seen, except for the traffic issue, maybe. As I understand, you can't put landscaping up on the corner in such a way that it would restrict the view of maybe a left turn onto Wildwood. It's not clear to me on this, this drawing that, that what kind of vegetation would occur on that corner. That it may even become less vegetation than it is now. I don't know. This, secondly, this may be a public works question, but is there any parking, or can you park on up to the radius currently?
Thank you. And I appreciate you bringing that up because we've had discussion with Mr. Leitner. The neighborhood has suggested there should be parking removed for a portion of Sherman's Hollow. We have no problem with that. These are going to be double-car garages for each unit, a driveway to park on outside of the unit. In addition to that, there would be whatever down the street would be required. But we have no problem with removing parking near, at the intersection. However, the city staff would like to see that done.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Mayor, there was also an attachment that I think was on your desk, and one of the residents, I know at least, talked to Mr. Leitner about association bylaws. Mr. Leitner reviewed those and actually said that he thought in some respects he was more restrictive than those. This is also what he's committing to do as a part of his routine business.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and traffic, Mayor, I guess I really should comment. We view traffic from a development of this nature, and, and I don't live in the neighborhood, so I want to be cautious not to be critical, but it, it actually wouldn't really be measurable. And that's when you look at the trip generation per unit and what that means per day for the arterial street versus Sherman's Hollow. And we also, we're very fortunate here in that this is not like Hazelton. We have access through Harper's Ferry to Edgewood and the trails of Kaufman Hills to the west. So it's not like we're locked into the subdivision with only one way out. Be happy to answer any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to speak?
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Steve Leitner, 710 Wildwood Drive, Jefferson West Apartments. I'm the one that they're all talking about. So I think Mr. Bates pretty much talked about all the issues. I know we talked about the parking problem. We're only building two-bedroom units with two-car garage, so we anticipate that most often the people will be parking in their garage. And I don't anticipate that that will be a big problem. We wanted a two-car garage just because these, all these units will be handicap accessible, and they will be easy to drive into. If someone has a van that needs a lift, you can have a two-car garage and still have a lift. All of our new units, the demand is right now to have easy access, no steps. And that's what we're finding to be the most necessary and very, very, what people are looking for at this point when they want to age up into something a little nicer, but have certain health issues to deal with. So just wanted to bring that up. I don't think parking would ever be an issue on that. The one thing I cannot resolve is the concerns that people have about renters being bad neighbors. And I don't feel that that's really a fair statement. I don't think it'll, I think our units will end up costing more than the units, in some ways, that they have right there now. Because with additional cost of construction, these are going to be expensive units to build, and we're going to have to charge pretty high rents to actually afford to, to cover the cost of the mortgage and that kind of thing. And I want to bring up something as well. I know we had President Bush, who just passed away. He was very much an advocate for fair housing. And one of his, he said that when he served in the Navy, that he served with individuals who represented a variety of ethnic, religious, and economic backgrounds. And that one of his comments or quotes was, let me see, "No government should determine who should, who's allowed to live in what areas." And I think I've got the quote right, but I'd have to look at it again. But I think it's important that we realize that tenants are real people. They're not, not second-class citizens, and they have a right to live in nice areas. And this is definitely a nice area, and we want to maintain that. We want the, the property values to stay, stay good. We want to have a curb appeal on these units that will reflect the neighborhood. And I think that's important for us to do that. Any, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Leitner, did you get a chance to share with the rest of the people who live in that area, this one sheet page that you presented to us?
I'm not for sure who all that was circulated to, but we did go through the covenants of the neighborhood association. of the neighborhood association and actually we're much more restrictive on who we will rent to and what our, our rules and regulations are than what's in their covenants right now. Couple of things that were in their covenants that we don't have in our rules and regulations are keeping the garage doors down. Never thought about that. And the other is the, the rollout trash bins.
Mr. Kroll can make copies. Does the audience need copies of this?
I have a few copies. I could pass them.
Okay. Oh, there's some copies.
Mr. Weiss, did you guys receive a copy of this?
I've gotten a lot of paper. I don't know which.
Yeah, we've got plenty of copies here.
Okay, there are copies. Okay, so we'll, we have them up here, but you're welcome to distribute them in, to the audience and thank you.
And Mr. Light, Mr. Lightner, you had talked about the cost to, well, you had talked about possible cost to construct these. Do you have a roundabout figure of how much?
Boy, I wish I did. I think we're talking just the units themselves, maybe over $700,000 and then the land cost was, was, this was not a cheap piece of land. But it, it's important to us too because it's adjacent to our property and we wanted that buffer. I didn't want the hamburger joint or whatever might go in there. I talked before about, you know, a tattoo parlor or whatever might go next to us. We don't want that. We want to maintain our values of our property as well.
So is it fair to say that rent, you're looking at about $1,000 a month?
It would probably start at $1,000. I think it was going to have to be more than that, yeah.
Okay, a little bit more than that, okay.
Yeah. When we add in the, the new cost of, of trash water that now rental owners must, must provide, a page direct to the city.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lightner.
Thank you. And one other thing I wanted to add, we are over-communicative when we do something and so we'd be glad to contact our adjacent neighbor and tell her when we're going to have the concrete people there, when we're going to start the excavation and, and what to expect, even if it's on a daily basis. That may be overkill, but I think communication is so important.
That would be great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak about this?
I just want to say one thing. I'm not going to take any time. I just, unlike whoever, I don't want a hamburger joint there. I want to have property.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, how are you all? Thank you for your time. Terry Rema. I'm with partners, one of the developers of this property, have honed it since 1994. This property has certainly been built under the guidance of the city, city code. We've made every effort to comply with all the requirements. We've, we've had a good relationship with the city and in the process of selling this property, we've been approached by other companies, a gutter company who wanted to build an office there and have employees. We've been approached by other businesses to build office buildings, things like this that would generate more traffic and more congestion on that intersection. And when the Lightner family approached us about this project and to, to build duplexes, we certainly questioned them in detail about how it would look and we've been assured that it would look similar to the other housing that's on that street. We've been assured that we would be in compliance with the city codes. We think it's a very appropriate and proper piece of property to be used as it's been proposed to be used. And we support the project. We've, we looked into it deeply before we sold it to the Lightner family and the Lightner family has been our neighbor ever since we've been there. They were there before we were there and we've had no issues with the Lightner family, the Lightner company. They've been very cooperative when we developed that land going down the hill. So I think they would be a good partner for the community and for that area. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak before we close the hearing? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing and take up Bill 201855.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addressed as 3410 Sherman's Hollow.
All right, and I'll make a few comments too as a former resident in this area, lived a few blocks from here for 16 years, so definitely very familiar with the area and I, if it, I know last time it was a six to four vote. If it's a five to five, I will be voting in favor of breaking the tie for this development and I do think that rental and duplex of this caliber will be a good fit. Personally, when I was looking for rental, it was hard to find in the fourth ward where I wanted to remain and so I'm a duplex owner, my, or renter myself, a duplex renter and they're hard to find and this property is next to 196 units of rental already and the surrounding area is all office commercial and so I think this is a better use than office space or commercial. And the traffic looks like it can be addressed with the parking in the garages and if there's no parking on certain parts of the road, looks like the city can work with the developer and the residents in that area to limit parking on, on street if needed. And no matter what goes there, there will be traffic, parking, if it remains as is with nothing there, that's one thing, but something would be built there and so the, the issues of water that the city is working through and, and the communication there with stormwater, any development would have. The mention about traffic, I know I did hear a couple of times that people said people are going too fast on Wildwood and certainly I'm sure, we have PD here in, in the room and I'm sure they've taken note of that and would, every so often they do random enforcement and I'm, I have a feeling that's going to end up on the list of random enforcement that, and I know it's a constant thing living there for 16 years. I know it's something that's, that was done as needed and then as it progresses you all are back there enforcing. So it sounds like that could be a problem or something you'll be addressing, but certainly a lot of these things like Mr. Lightner said can be communicated and addressed through good communication. So I would just ask that Mr. Lightner continue to communicate, especially with Dottie and some of the surrounding neighbors in close proximity and really with the entire development and neighborhood. It sounds like that's your intention and certainly Mr. Barron can stay in, in communication and contact with some of the other concerns as well so that some of these questions, if there's any questions that were asked during the public hearing that did not get answered, some of them seem kind of technical that maybe Mr. Barron on your way out, you could certainly stop with him and get his number so that you all can keep that communication and make sure you get the answers to the questions. So with that, I'll actually turn it back over to council. Are there any other council deliberation? Mr. Fitzwater?
Yeah, thank you very much. I initially did not support this proposal either. I appreciate council working with us a couple of meetings ago to allow us to revisit this issue. My concern initially was, and I put a lot of stock in what planning and zoning does and so it's not a negative on planning and zoning. I know this issue come out initially unanimous from them and I usually put a lot of weight on what planning and zoning does because I think they do a thorough assessment. But there were some issues raised that night. I think the last four or five weeks having the opportunity to talk with, with some of the, the community, the folks that live in the area to get a little bit better handle on what is going on and I appreciate Mr. Van Horn and Mr. Weiss and all the others that met with us on November 17th. Councilman Graham and I did have an opportunity to meet with some citizens. I guess we had about 30 or 40 folks here. Mr. Sanders and Mr. Barron were also here and I think I complimented at the last meeting the work that Mr. Barron did because he did a great job of explaining the project, fielding questions. I think comforted some folks who were here, some, you know, still have some concerns, but as I go back through and look at this project, I think we have checked, or they have checked all the boxes that we legitimately could hold someone accountable to on a project at this size. You know, I think it is very clear at some point there is going to be something on this property. I think Mr. Lightner and, and, you know, I've had conversation with them by phone. We met again this afternoon just to kind of make sure that I was up to speed on everything that has been said in writing and again, I appreciate the concerns of the, the folks that live in the community. I think we will make sure and, you know, we've got a very professional staff that will make sure that this project moves forward if council decides to move it forward as proposed. You know, there was a question raised, would we guarantee? No, we can't guarantee, but we have to put our belief and, and our trust in professionals and we've got professionals that we've dealt with that have always been very open to us, at least my term on, on city council, to present projects, give us the pros and cons, say here's the positive, here's the, the push areas. So with all that, I will be also supporting the issue tonight. I think we have done due diligence. Again, I appreciate the community for stepping up, holding us accountable to ask the tough questions and in my mind, you know, I think we have answered those questions and I'll be supporting the issue.
Thank you. I commend you and Councilman Graham for holding the community meeting with the neighborhood. Any other council deliberation? Okay, roll call please.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. We want to thank everyone who came here this evening as well on this bill. Item six, there are no appointments by the mayor. Item seven, we have no presentations. Item eight, announcements. Do we have any council announcements this evening? Councilwoman Wiseman?
Yes, the admin committee has been canceled for this month, so we'll reconvene next year.
Okay, great. Any other council or committee announcements? Okay. And I'll give my announcements and I know this week we also, or is it next week? We have the dedication for the fire truck, the new fire apparatus next week on, and I, it, oh, thank you. Oh, never mind, we're giving that next. Okay, so Mr. or Chief Schofield, would you like to inform us of what's right in front of me here?
Be happy to, yes. On December 11th at 4:30 in the afternoon at Miller Performing Arts, we'll have the, the fire truck fleet dedication. That event has been in the making for a little over two years, so we are excited to, to present those trucks to the community and, and to all of you and our chaplain will be there to offer a blessing as well. So we're excited to do that and welcome everybody there. The public is of course welcome.
Great. We will look forward to being there next Tuesday on the 11th and speaking of the new fire apparatus, they were on display at the downtown's Living Windows on Friday night and very impressive sight. You could certainly see them from across town with the, the ladders and the red, white, and blue lights, so that was something new and very impressive.
Just glad to be there and had a lot of good comments and definitely something that we are proud of and excited to serve our community with.
Well, congratulations and we look forward to showcasing those and I'll lead into some of my announcements too. The mayor's Christmas tree lighting was Thursday night and you did have the, the fire apparatus there for the children. I know some were kind of ready to drive that around and, and seemed to be having fun with that, so that was very cool. But I do want to also thank our city's Parks and Recreation Department for all they did to get the mayor's Christmas tree lighting. I know Mr. Spalding, your team went above and beyond. It's a Candyland theme. Be sure to go to Rotary Centennial Park and check it out. It was an incredible night of beautiful weather and we had an amazing tree lighting, so please make sure you enjoy that tree with your family. And then of course, the Living Windows and Christmas Parade were a big success. I know Councilwoman Wiseman was instrumental in working on the J.C.'s Parade that was a big success over the weekend. And a few things I have coming up this week on Wednesday, December 5th is the Special Olympics Power Hour Polar Plunge. So this Wednesday, if you want to see the mayor run through the hazmat sprinklers in freezing cold weather, along with our very own Councilman Rick Mahalovich.
Yes.
Cut his mic off, please. Please cut his mic off.
I've tried to not to miss any more meetings. Especially when Carlos is so good at talking for me. Mind the hat and my abs.
Looking out for you, yeah.
But you realize the, the mayor has a challenge with the county in, in the form of our, our county sheriff. So I think it's only right that I, I'm a team member of, of the mayor, so.
You better be.
So I need to, I need to generate $500 or I don't go through the plunge. So you all can be a big part of me, helping me and helping the mayor on this county-city challenge. So I'll be waiting at the door, maybe with a bucket too.
I think Carlos is going to put the first amount of money in that bucket.
That's what I expected, so I appreciate, I'm just going to thank you ahead of time, okay?
Yeah, but you've already got 500, you've already committed to 500.
Well, that's a different deal now.
So you're going to raise 1,000?
Well, I may get legal counsel involved here.
Well, the 500 you're giving me for, for, or not me, but for my.
Right.
Salvation Army container, so that's a different 500.
It's not here now.
So I don't have it here tonight, but the 500 to raise, and actually throwing this out there to the public, for $500 if anybody wants to be a plunger, you get the opportunity to, or what you do, which some people have done, is you say for $500, they pick the person they want to plunge. So for example, Hal Dooley, our award winner last, at the last council meeting, was chosen to go through the plunge because he had someone nominated and on behalf of them for $500 had them do it. And I will say our, our new state representative Rudy Veat, for example, donated the $500 for Derek Sandvody, who's a Special Olympics athlete, to go through and Derek actually is very excited about it, but certainly anyone who wants to have somebody from their organization go through can do that. I have to give out cheers to Chief Schofield because he's going to do it again for the second time.
That's right. In fact, I also recruited Captain Darren Reuter is also going to be, Bear, if you know Bear, one of our.
Our Bear, yes, we know Bear.
Yes, fire captains is also going to go through with me, so I've, I've wrangled him into that as well.
Well, good for you. So fire department is really going to one-up the police department. Now, police department is going to have a police officer present and running through there.
Who's that? Which officer? Detective Edwards?
Uh, chief has designated an officer that's going to run through, so not, Derek has a look on his face of panic right now.
I think it's Detective Mark Edwards.
Okay, well, yeah, I think Mark might have just been nominated too in the back room there.
Yeah.
Well, regardless, we appreciate the support. If anybody wants to donate to any of us in the room that are doing it, it all goes to the Special Olympics athletes here locally for this Power Hour plunge. If you want to come witness this spectacle, it's this Wednesday, December 5th at the corner of High and Madison Street. It's between 4:30 and 5:30 PM this Wednesday, so please come by and at least cheer us on running through the freezing cold hazmat sprinkler. And then I also mentioned the Salvation Army, the Art of the Red Kettle. I already have a $500 bid on my kettle that I had here last week, so thank you, Councilman Mahalovich, who has decided to stand up and continue, did not bring that back up for reconsideration tonight, so. But if anybody wants to add to that, the bidding goes on through Christmas Eve. There's four kettles you can bid on, one we have on display out here in the, in the foyer and call the Salvation Army to place your bid. It all goes to great causes. Item nine, Lincoln University student, oh, yes.
You were, you were running through that. I just had one comment I wanted to make on the tree lighting. Had a chance to talk to, and it's a compliment for the chief, had a chance to talk to some of his staff and saw the new fire truck there. I basically went down there to see the tree lighting and, you know, saw the fire truck and he explained to me that the fire truck was there as a barricade for the event. My compliment is to our public safety folks that, you know, I never thought about needing a barricade. I mean, we live in a great community where we don't have to think about those things all the time, but our public safety folks are thinking about those issues all the time, so thank you very much for looking out for us, even when we don't know that you're looking out for us. We get to attend events and have a great time and there's always someone thinking about what if. We don't want this to be the community where it happens, but if something happens, I feel very comfortable that our folks have thought it through, so thank you.
Absolutely. Great compliments. And another thing that the evening of the tree lighting, we actually had the governor, Governor Parson and First Lady Teresa Parson attended the mayor's tree lighting, so very thankful that they have really embraced the things going on in this community and that they loved it enough to come and be a part of it. And they had their own tree lighting the following night, but I thought it was very, very cool that the governor and his wife chose to come and they just wanted to be spectators and come and enjoy it, so we appreciated having them here. Councilman Hussey?
Just a quick thank you to Ryan coming in on a Saturday. I had my YMCA Youth and Government program this past week. We had 500 high school students in town doing a mock government program and we have a judicial component that we always struggle to find a good space for our, our final mock trials and Ryan came in and, and we're able to use this space in the new courtroom facility next door. So in your seats and here, there was 110 high school students watching a trial being conducted and students in their judicial robes and so Ryan was kind enough on a Saturday morning to come in and unlock and, and lock back up. So it was a cool experience and I think that the students really appreciated a chance to be in another venue in Jefferson City that we don't always think about as being a, a place for events to take place. So thank you, Ryan.
That is a great idea. Thank you, Ryan.
If I may, in conjunction with that event, previously the municipal court had its first court day last week. By all accounts, it went very well, positive feedback on the space and the operation of the court, I think we're already seeing. I think we're already seeing areas where there's an improvement in having a space that's dedicated for court, and so I want to thank the council for its support on the project. And if you haven't had a chance to go over and take a look at the new courtroom, please let me know. I'm happy to give you the nickel tour.
Great. Thank you very much.
Not on Wednesdays. That's correct, not on Wednesdays.
It looks great. It looks, yeah, very nice, very, it really has turned out great. Any other announcements? Okay, item nine, Lincoln University student representative update, Mrs. Carolyn Wanjaro.
Well, we have two more weeks left of school, and as of next week, Friday, I will be going to California, so I will not be with you all until the second week in January. And I'm celebrating my birthday on Wednesday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
We're glad to have you here, and I know that there was an event at Lincoln University, and you maybe didn't know that our own Councilman Graham is also a member of President Wolfolk's Gladys Wolfolk Night, and he's one of the Pips. He was one of the four Pips, so I don't know if y'all knew that, but I just want to make sure that y'all knew that. But that was, it was a talent show for United Way, so not that I'm asking to bust out any of your talent, Carlos.
But I also want to thank Madam Mayor for coming as well, too, as she was Cher, so she was Mayor Cher at the United Way celebration as well, too. And we did, I want to thank the community for coming out last week and supporting our United Way efforts. We did raise some nice amount of money for the United Way, and it also got our other faculty and staff members and students to give as well, too. So I'm happy where we're at now and where we'll be at by the end of, end of this month, so.
Fantastic.
So thank you for your support.
Thank you all. All right. Item 10, presentations. We have everybody accounted for. And then item 10, consent agendas, their motion to approve.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced, 2018-78.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 2.69 acres located in the 700 block of Route CC from RU Rural to C2 General Commercial.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen is a location map with the property highlighted. There toward the top of the screen is the intersection of Highway 179 and Route C, and then Route CC and C, there's a stoplight located right there. So the property borders on Route C, but very nearly has frontage on Route C. Just adjacent to the property is the Green Horizons Garden Center, commercial operations, been there for many years. And it's actually that, that property owner that's looking at purchasing the highlighted property here, which is a portion of what remains of a farm essentially in that area. This bill would rezone the property to a C2, a general commercial category, in order to match the adjacent Green Horizons property. The existing zoning on the property is an RU, a rural zoning. There's two things I feel necessary to point out here, that this area was part of a 2007 annexation, is a voter-approved annexation back in 2007, called the Capitol Hills Route C area, is a very large annexation. At that time, the plan of intent for that annexation, which is an important document for voter-approved annexations, highlighted that the property inner around the intersection of Route C and 179 is well-suited for commercial development. At the same time, according to zoning code, property when annexed into the city, unless there's a specific plan for the property, by default gets assigned an RU zoning, so rural RU is what we refer to as a base zoning district. So that is the reason the property is owned rural right now, even though it was highlighted within the plan of intent, the commercial potential near that intersection, there was no attempt to prezone this property. This application was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their November 8th meeting. They recommended approval of the rezoning proposal on a vote of five to two. It's five in favor and two against. There were some concerns by adjacent residential property owners, actually got a commercial zoning on their property. It was formerly used as a old print shop within their garage. I think there were some concerns from that property owner as to the potential effects of the rezoning. It is scheduled for a public hearing on December 17th. I'd be happy to answer any questions, the councilman.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. 2018-79.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 22 acres, generally described as a portion of the area, south of Dunklin Street, east of Madison Street, north of Hickory Street, and west of Lafayette Street, consisting of 96 property parcels from RA2 multifamily residential, C2 general commercial, and RD residential duplex to RS4 single-family residential.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a large area rezoning. The area is shown up on the screen. As Clerk added, consists of 22 acres and 96 different properties. So to orient to the location, up toward the top of the screen is Dunklin Street, and toward the left-hand side of the screen is Madison Street. Just off the right-hand side of the screen is Lafayette Street, and about the best locator on the bottom of the screen is Hickory Street. And so this bill would implement a zoning plan shown on the screen, would basically be rezoning all of the area located within the yellow lines from their existing zoning categories to an RS4, a single-family residential category. Note that the area is divided. There's actually this RD-zoned portion on the far right-hand of the screen. The center of the screen primarily zoned RA2, which is a multifamily residential zoning district, and then a small portion of C2 zoning up in this area. There are four properties that were specifically left out of this rezoning plan. They're all highlighted here with notes, and the reason for that is they're buildings that were constructed and are being used in a manner that would be in conflict with the single-family zoning. In other words, there, three of them are apartment buildings built for that purpose, and the fourth one is a small commercial operation. This is a staff-initiated proposal. It comes out of recommendations of the recently adopted Old Munichburg South Side Neighborhood Plan. The recommended land use component of that plan is shown up on the screen. The next slide, this one is zoomed in on specific area that we're dealing with with this bill. The area highlighted in black, again with the exempted property circled also. The tan color located up here on the screen basically represents that the plan is calling out that these areas should be used as a single-family residential category, and so the staff's proposal to downzone to that single-family category helps to implement that South Side Plan. Staff did conduct a land use survey of the area. Up on the screen is the results of that survey. The primary two colors I'll point out here are the green and the red. Green being properties that are identified as being used as single-family residential properties, which is the bulk of the neighborhood. Again, very supportive of a single-family zoning designation. The few red properties within the area are former single-family homes that have been converted to multiple units at some time in the past, which was a legal conversion considering the multifamily zoning on the property, but they would become a grandfathered or non-conforming use with this downzoning to single-family. They could continue to be operated as they are in perpetuity until such time as they are either voluntarily destroyed or voluntarily converted back to single-family residential. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this staff-initiated rezoning proposal at their meeting of November 8th and recommended approval on a vote of seven to zero. This matter is scheduled for a public hearing on December 17th. Oh, and we did conduct a neighborhood meeting in advance of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in order to get any questions from the neighborhood answered, so they could go to the Planning and Zoning Commission well-informed. That was held on October 30th.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think there was one concern about the church trying to expand. Did we ever get back with that pastor to talk about the options or what was grandfathered in?
We did have, not only did I discuss to some extent before the meeting, but also after the meeting, I met with a member of the planning staff to make sure he had access to the planning documents and could review those. The short answer is that there would be no effect on the church. They're not located within the rezoning area. You know, any expansion of their church would basically be unaffected by this proposal.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. 2018-80.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $210,823 agreement with Donahue and Associates Incorporated for the Westview Pump Station upgrade and Basin Ten sewer evaluation.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this is a consultant contract with Donahue. They've done pump stations for the city in the past, and basically they're going to evaluate the Westview Heights area pump station. It's located near a park right now, but not only would they look at the capacity of the pump station, but also site in a different location to help expansion in that area. And as Clerk indicated, it's a $210,000 contract. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. 2018-81.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a redevelopment contract with the housing authority of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance approves an agreement between the city and the housing authority to convey the property known as Adrian's Island to the city. This is in conjunction with the restricted gift agreement that we saw earlier this evening, but essentially this agreement conveys the property from the housing authority to the city and then commits use of that property for development of a passive park on the island property itself. That's basically, there's a bunch of language in here that the housing authority is required to include its part of its acquisition and then redistribution program. When the housing authority takes hold of property, there are certain things that has to be in the agreements that then go out. So essentially, there's some restrictions, you know, regarding, you know, equal opportunity and those types of general federal regulations that are also included, but this is actually a fairly simple agreement where essentially the city is taking ownership of Adrian's Island and then guarantee, or, and then adds a restriction on the use, saying that it will be developed as a passive park.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moulman. 2018-82.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Command Web Offset Company Incorporated, a Missouri corporation, consisting of the acquisition and installation of certain personal property and equipment at the company's manufacturing facility, authorizing the city of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Command Web Project Series 2018, in a principal amount not to exceed $34,250,000 to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. Sean Sappenhill with the chamber is here to speak on the matter, but essentially, Chapter 100 is a means to provide tax abatement on personal property purchases, and these documents attached to this ordinance allow for that process to allow the city to take ownership of the personal property, receive the tax abatement on the property, so it acts as an encouragement for industrial concerns to build and expand within the city.
Thank you, Mr. Sappenhill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. As Ryan had indicated, we have been working, the Jefferson City Chamber has been working with Command Web on this project. Began in, discussions began in 2017 about this project, this expansion project, and we came together as a, we call it the Incentive Task Force, which is representation by the city, the county, and by the school district, along with the executive staff of the chamber. We began working with Command Web and their ownership in regards to a multimillion-dollar expansion. This expansion looks at personal property right now, as referred to, not to exceed the $34 million, again, personal property. This project began in 2018. Command Web has already put in two bindery lines, excess of $10 million, and also within this, there is a commitment of jobs, net new jobs, full-time jobs, 25. And in speaking with the local plant manager, Chris Huckleberry, which is with me tonight, we are, he is already, the company has already secured 22 of those 25 jobs from January 1st of this year, 2018. As Mr. Moulman has indicated, this is a Chapter 100 bond, which refers to the statute. This is to provide property tax, personal property tax abatement to the company to support their expenditures, their growth within the community. This will allow them not only to maintain their current clients and customers, but to seek new customers and clients, as it will rely on and provide them capacity for production. And so what we would like to do tonight is answer any questions that the mayor or the council may have on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Sappenhill, and also Mr. Huckleberry for being here this evening. Any questions of council or comments?
I have one question.
Councilman Graham?
How many years is the abatement for?
The abatement is for a seven-year period, and this will be, that will be the term, and it will be a 50% abatement. So that abatement, obviously the benefit to the company at a 50% level for that seven-year term.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions if I could ask? I do have the plant manager here tonight. If there's any questions of the plant manager more specific than what I brought to the council, I am sure that he would be happy to speak to that.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd invite him to speak if he'd like to say what the plans are or to elaborate any, because certainly good news.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here tonight. I'm looking a little rough. We've been working seven days a week the last several weeks, and our output right now is right at 1 million books per day, okay? Our average is about 4.5 million books per week, and most of those, most of those books are juvenile books. As I think most of you know, we're Scholastic's largest supplier. We are probably the largest paperback plant in the world that no one's ever heard of, outside Jefferson City, and most of our competitors are big public companies. So anyway, we established here in Jeff City in 1994. We've had, we've had several expansions. We, our current expansion right now is we've already spent 10 million bills on a couple of new binding lines. They are the absolute newest binding lines on the face of the earth, not just the city or state or United States, but in the world. These are the fastest, most modern binding lines that money can buy, okay, for the production of paperback books. Step two, our two new presses that are coming in January, December 7th, we're going to silence one of our older equipment. It's near its end of life, so we will be taking it out, and in this place, we'll be putting two brand-new state-of-the-art presses. These presses will print the books very similar to the Harry Potter books or Hunger Games books, which we do 100% of those books in the country out of our plant. We're on target for about 200 million books, and we appreciate the support the community has given us. The question always comes up, you know, why do you do this? Our equipment is 20 years old, so you start getting into life, you have to recapitalize it. If you don't recapitalize it, your process slows down. Your customers are always looking for cost-cutting measures, and they find, they find an alternative. We don't want that to happen. We want to maintain our 200 full-time jobs here in Jefferson City, and we will do that. When it comes to paperback books, we'll be the last, the last company standing. If the whole world goes digital, we'll still be making paperback books here in Jefferson City. So any questions I can, I can answer?
That is very impressive and fantastic news. Any questions of council? Well, keep up the great work and appreciate all you do.
We really appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item 13, bills pending, we're on B, 2018-72.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $333,844 and 8 cents land lease agreement with Fisher Grain Farms for city-owned property.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mayor. As Clerk indicated, this is a land lease with Fisher Grain Farms, but they're basically the city's farmer for the airport property and the wastewater property located north of the river. It's about 500 acres we lease to them. They have to comply with certain restrictions around the airport and then certain planning restrictions on the wastewater property. The $333,000 figure is over the five-year life, so it's really about $64,000 a year. Of course, it's renewed annually, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? Okay, thank you. 2018-73. Oh, never mind. Roll call. I'm really skipping around. I'm doing fast now. Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bill passes. 2018-74.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $500,614 and 26 cents agreement with MERA Excavating LLC for the sanitary sewer replacement various locations project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Mayor. As Clerk indicated, construction contact with MERA, contract with MERA Excavating, they were the ones who completed the Hazleton Pump Station project recently, but basically, there's five locations about the city that these projects are either too large for our own city staff to do or that we can't do with trenchless-type technology. So every once in a while, we let out a contract like this to complete those projects. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-75.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2017-2018 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Workers' Compensation Fund.
Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the Clerk indicated, this is a $50,000 supplemental to cover medical claims and services in the Workers' Comp Fund for fiscal year 18 budget.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2018-76.
An ordinance amending the 2018-2019 budget by reclassifying 1 Administrative Technician to Neighborhood Services Specialist 1 within the Department of Planning and Protective Services.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This position reclassification would convert an existing administrative technician position, which was created out of two halftime FTEs, which was filled back in 2017 for the first time. It was basically a new position, and it would create a Neighborhood Specialist 1, which is two pay grades above the existing job. As it was filled, we realized that our expectations of the duties and responsibilities actually exceeded the job description of administrative technician. So when it became vacant, we worked with Human Resources to perform a job classification evaluation. Mrs. Strope can go into more details if requested. But based on that evaluation, it was determined that we should recommend reclassifying this position. This position would work with Community Development Block Program, Household Heritage Waste, administrative, not administrative, administration, internal administration of the property maintenance. Our property maintenance staff is going to start working out in the field more, so we need someone knowledgeable in that area inside of City Hall. With that, oh, I'm sorry. The funding comes from our Community Development Block grant. Half of our funding does. The other comes out of the general revenue, and the impact, fiscal impact, would be at least $3,369. That's the base difference of the two job positions. So until the job is filled, we really don't know what that fiscal impact would be. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Graham.
Is that entire $3,300 from the GR or is it split $1,650?
The position is funded half out of the Community Development Block grant, so that difference to the general revenue would be half of that, $3,369, you know, as the entry level pay difference between the two pay grades.
And that's in our budget for this year?
The position has currently been vacant right now. It'd probably take us another month or so to fill the position, so that pay difference, we feel, we could absorb that in the budget of this year. We also have had that position vacant since, oh, I don't know, midsummer, so there is money going back into the general fund, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, informal calendar, 2018-66, and Councilman Graham does intend to pull that off, so we will have another reading.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $22,000 agreement with Rave Mobility for the purchase of Rave Mobility and a 50% cost share with Cole County.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. After discussion at the last council meeting, concerns specifically about use of end-user information, I reached back out to Rave Mobility and asked them how do they deal with security and handling of information of end-users. And they said that this is a common question they have, and they referred me to their master license service agreement, which is now attached as Exhibit B to the contract between the City of Jefferson and Rave Mobility. Specifically, I directed your attention to Section 7.3 of the Master License Service Agreement.
Or deliberation? Councilman Hensley?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Graham for allowing the additional time for this to happen. I also like to thank the Law Department for getting this done and enhancing the contract. One thing I'd say is that Paragraph 9 of the contract, by my reading, anyway, would allow Rave to share any report data or similar information that the city would give them with anyone they choose for any purpose whatsoever, unless we specifically request that those items be kept confidential. I wouldn't expect that we would be providing them anything that isn't sensitive and important. I can see no good reason to allow them sort of that free rein. I think it would be a good idea, if this passes tonight, concurrent with our execution and our delivery of an executed contract back to Rave, that the council direct staff to specifically request Rave pursuant to Paragraph 9 of this contract to keep every single report, piece of data, or other similar information that we transmit to them confidential. Rather than renegotiating this particular paragraph of the contract, I'd just say we execute on it now and make it apply to everything that we give them, and I would make a motion to that end.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All right, so I believe at this time, we'll vote to accept the motion, which is separate from the bill in front of us. Oh, it's an amendment to the, this is an amendment?
I'm not seeking to amend the contract. I would see it as a motion relevant to the execution of the underlying bill.
So do you have the motion, Mrs. Donaldson?
Council directs staff pursuant to Paragraph 9 to keep all communication that the city provides confidential.
Mr. Moulman, is that an appropriate motion?
I understand it.
Okay, so we have a motion in second. Any discussion on the motion? So we're not voting on the bill, we're voting on the motion, so roll call, or I guess all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion, that particular motion passes, and I'll back on the item, Bill 2018-66. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
No.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
All right, bill passes.
15, we've taken up the resolution. We have no one sign up for presentation. Any council and staff discussion? Okay, so the next item here, we will go into closed session, and before we do, I do